You're still with us?
Yeah.
They didn't have G I. They didn't have interrupters, they didn't have the safety back there either. No, this is pure luck.
That's true. I think it wouldn't have.
It was about a problem. Yeah, completed a full circuit. Yeah, now they have safety. These no. Done. It's great. I guess I'll let it go.
I'd like to call the village board meeting for the village of Cary for May 2nd, 2023 to order with roll call, please.
Cavelli.
Here.
Weinhammer.
Here.
McAlpine.
Here.
Dudak.
Here.
Collier.
Here.
Walrath.
Here.
Thank you. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Courtney, could you grab the list, please?
Grab the list.
Now, moving to the open forum, the public is invited to make an issue-oriented comment on any matter of public concern not otherwise on the agenda. Thank you, Courtney. Martha Ritter.
Martha Ritter, 239 North School Street. I would like to know why the yellow flashing lights by the fire department to cross Cary Algonquin Road are not enforced. I almost got hit there three times in the last month. Someone is going to get killed there. Yeah, well, at least the fire department won't have very far to go. I even volunteered to be the person who pushes the button while the police sit in the fire station parking lot. To no avail. Nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll look into that. Randy Scott. Did you have a comment?
No, sir.
Okay. Is there anybody else here that would like to make a comment to the village board during open forum? We'll go ahead and close open forum at 6:02. Quite a few things on my report tonight, so we'll just get it going. Trustee Kim Cavelli is retiring this evening, so would you please meet me up front?
She's looking for the Carnegie, sorry. She's beautiful, Heidi, if you're here. This is a fact that we give to trustee Cavelli for recognition and dedication to the village of Cary from 2015 to 2023. Thank you very much. Let me come over and say, and I think that at the beginning of your tenure on the village board, I was a two-years in as mayor, you were a new trustee, we treaded some turbulent waters at the time, but you know what? We prevailed because we kept the village of Cary in our eyesight. Look at the wonderful things that you've done with the rest of the board while we're sitting at the board. We've got your name on a couple buildings, the metro station, which they told us would never happen. And we worked very hard to make that happen. So, we're very excited about that. So, thank you for sticking with us on that. This beautiful building that we're in right now couldn't have happened without unanimous support of the board. They had some doubts at first about what's the direction we wanted to go, but we can't be better for the best part, for the heart of our community is right here at our village hall, and it really is a showcase and a testament to you as a trustee and how you have the vision of the future of the village of Cary. We've grown with trustee Cavelli through her career. We've been very excited to be there. Trustee McAlpine and I joined her for her swearing-in for her latest promotion as a deputy chief. She started here as a mayor sergeant when she was there, then she went to a commander. So, we were with her every step of the way, and I hope that you knew that leadership supported that. So, thank you very much from the village of Cary, everything that you've done for us, we are much better for, so thank you. I appreciate it.
I want to say thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the rest of the village board. It's been an honor serving with all of you. And also, the residents of Cary, thank you for the stony trust in you over these last eight years. And the village staff, thank you for all the questions you've answered over the years and put together great board packets that makes our decisions a lot easier. So, thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you. How long has it been since anyone asked for this one?
Oh, I was gonna take one, but all right.
Courtney, will you share that? Thank you. Now, with retirement, we have some continuing trustees with a new one. We're gonna go in order of alphabetized. Oh, so we're gonna start with trustee, trustee-elect Dale Collier. His family would like to come up and join in. That would be great. I didn't even start this. Come on back here. All right, you ready? Are you sure you wanna do this? Did you need questions? I get it, I get it. All right, raise your hand, please. I, Allen Junior, having been elected to the office of village trustee. I've been elected to the office of village trustee. In the village of Cary. In the village of Cary. In the county of McHenry, Oforsett. In the county of McHenry, Oforsett. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the constitution of the United States. That I will support the constitution of the United States. The constitution of the state of Illinois. The constitution of the state of Illinois. And that I will faithfully discharge. And I will faithfully discharge. The duties of the office of, it doesn't mean, of, 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 of,[749.12]
...for eligibility of the redevelopment project area. Pursuant to the statute, the Village of Cary is announcing the availability of the eligibility report, redevelopment project and plan, and housing impact study for the Village of Cary, Central Cary Tax Increment Finance District, TIF District Number Three. Copies of the documents can be obtained from the Village of Cary's website, www.caryillinois.com, or available for inspection in the office of the Deputy Village Clerk located at the Cary Municipal Center, 755 Georgetown Drive during regular business hours. Additional inquiries for further information regarding the proposed Central Cary Tax Increment Financing District, there's gotta be an acronym for that, shall be directed to the Office of Village of Cary's Community Development Director, Mr. Brian Simmons. And with that, we're gonna kinda go over a couple of the common misconceptions about the Cary Central TIF. One of the misconceptions is the proposed TIF will divert money away from schools and other taxing bodies, causing other taxpayers to pay more to meet their demands.
Can I ask a quick question on that?
Sure.
With the misconception? It says divert money away from schools. How is it not diverting money away from schools? I just, I have to ask.
Whatever the, well, let me, let me read the clarification and I'll go back.
Thank you.
Perhaps your, your answer will be there. For the clarification, "The TIF will not affect the tax revenue that local taxing districts rely upon. Each district will continue to levy their budgets annually and receive all of the tax revenue they were entitled to before the creation of the TIF. The property tax revenue that is generated from any new private development attracted by a TIF is new money. Without a TIF, this development would likely not occur, and the new, the new tax increment would not be produced in the long run. If a TIF can assist with increasing the tax base of an area which should benefit the schools and other taxing districts." What this is referring to is some of the misconceptions that we've felt, we've, I've gotten phone calls, emails, as well as staff, is that some of the misinformation that's being put forth by the school district is that they will lose all their taxing revenue from the homes.
I don't think they said all their taxing revenue.
Well, that, that's how it's-
When I watched it online, I didn't hear Mr. Dr. Coleman saying that.
Well, we're just kind of, we're gonna be broadly generalizing these because these are the questions that have been asked of us. So, we're, we're gonna make sure that everybody knows, whatever the taxing base is at the day, if there is a tax increment financing district created, they will continue to get that through the duration of the TIF. They are, they will, they are not getting anything from those properties. There's 253 properties in our 7,029 properties that we have.
I just don't wanna put anything out there that could be misleading, such as this misconception, where it will, saying that the misconception is diverting money away from schools when it is actually diverting money away from schools. I don't wanna put that out there as a misconception, because that is, in fact, what it is doing.
Okay, I, if I can clarify, 'cause I'm, I'm hearing two separate things. And I, and I'm just gonna make a statement that I think is gonna clarify the difference in between. If there is nothing changed, if there's no TIF district, and nothing changes with the current parcels and the current properties, there is no increment, there's no increase, there's no new taxes.
Correct.
So, there's nothing being taken away from any other taxing body, school district, fire district, like, nobody's getting anything taken away. The concept is, if there is something new, then there will be additional funds that go into this fund rather than those taxing bodies. That is a legitimate concern, and that is a topic for discussion with the joint session board that we're going to hold. There is an opportunity, and I don't wanna speak out of school, and I'll ask the attorney and everyone else to correct me, we can create the TIF in such a way that, using the school as an example, we can then release funds that would have been held and give it to the school for their operation. So, there is a solution to that argument, and, and a resolution that I think can be fair. And that's part of what the joint session board with the other taxing bodies will hash out. So, from our standpoint, the village is putting this out as an opportunity, and we're gonna talk about it. The other taxing bodies can sit down with us and talk about it. My concern from either side, from our side, from the village, from the school district, I pay taxes to the school districts, two of them, and to the, to the library and everybody else. I don't like the fact, before we've had any discussions as an organization with their organization, that they're actively campaigning "no" against something they haven't even participated in creating yet. That, to me, is disingenuous. I know the fire district, in particular, has talked to our staff, has not made any statement. We can all sit down and figure it out together. That's my soapbox stance. I wish we could talk about it through the normal channels rather than through public and, to this point, misconception. I was stopped so many times in the last three weeks asking why TIF district is gonna raise my taxes. And it's, it's mind-boggling what people are putting together versus what we have the opportunity to do if we choose. So, again, I'll get off my soapbox.
No, and I do appreciate you saying that, and I do appreciate you saying both sides. My only concern is that I don't wanna put something out there that says there is a misconception, that it will divert money away from schools. I understand what you're saying, Trustee Walworth, if there isn't a TIF district, it won't. However, if there is, it will. So, I don't wanna put anything out there that's saying that money won't be diverted away from schools.
Again, I think what he said is that it would only, the only impact is if something happens. If there's no development.
That's what I did just say that, though.
Okay.
Attorney Eulish is gonna kinda wrap this up for us.
I think you've explained it well. As the mayor indicated, there isn't a TIF in place yet.
Correct.
This is still in discussion. The idea is, if the TIF is adopted, that it will, we will offer a platform to stimulate development in the village that otherwise would not occur. And should that happen, as Trustee Walworth just pointed out, you have all, this board, the village, has complete flexibility to determine what to do with that additional increment, how much is dedicated to a new development, to a new project, how much is dedicated to infrastructure, and how much may be shared in the event that there is surplus with the additional taxing bodies. But the idea is, without the TIF, without the additional tool, we may miss the opportunity to generate additional growth in the village.
May I ask a question? So, I too had a couple of questions posed of this, and I wonder, to your point, Rick, if it's, it's more the language that's in this misconception than, than the reality of what's happening? What I've been asked is, the TIF is going to increase my taxes. So, if you flip this around, it's really the same thing, right? If it's, if they're diverting, that means they're gonna charge me somewhere else. So, I guess this is a question maybe for you, Jennifer, as far as a misconception is concerned, are you more agreeable to the fact that a TIF will increase my taxes? The conception or the expectation is that the TIF is gonna increase my taxes?
I agree with you on that comment. However, I don't agree with you that it's not gonna divert money away from schools. And I did hear Trustee Walworth and Trustee McAlpine saying, but there is no TIF in place. I understand what you guys are saying, and I do understand and agree with you, Trustee Dudik, with not raising the taxes. However, I don't wanna put anything out there that says that it's not gonna divert money away from schools when it will be.
My suggestion is, maybe we eliminate that and suggest that the misconception is a TIF is gonna increase my taxes.
That's fine with me.
And I would just, I made a pretty strong statement, and I wanna make sure I clarify. And this is something I've said on any topic and anything, no is an acceptable answer. That's part of what we do here. If your answer is no, that's perfectly fine. I wanna make sure that we're having debates and discussions on the merits and not on things that are not applicable and that are rumor or social media-generated hype. Let's talk about the facts of what is and what might be, and what we can go from there. And if your answer then is no, then your answer is no. That is exactly what you're supposed to do. And I appreciate the fact that you would do that if that's your conviction, and you should.
And, and a reminder, we will have processes and meetings in place for the discussion. We are, this is a report that we're just meant to update the, the public, that there is information on our website. We've been asked several questions about the topic. So, it is posted along with the information the mayor referenced that's on the website now. There's information with a lot of the questions we've been asked answered on there as well. So, that's just part of our initial outreach. We'll continue to do that, be transparent and give information as much as we can. And as we get more questions, we'll, we'll post those as well and answers to those as well. And, of course, there are other meetings where this topic will be discussed and information and questions will continue to flow from staff to the board and through the JRB as well. So, this is just the first, a series of attempts that we will have to get information out, and we appreciate the interest in the, the discussion, and there's more to come.
Thank you for those explanations. I guess the, the basis of this whole thing is to let people know, if you've got questions, come to the village and ask us. Don't find your, your messaging and your answers on Facebook, it's inaccurate. We're more than happy to meet with a business, a resident, a fellow elected officials. I have got several appointments lined up with elected officials that have questions. I welcome that opportunity. It's an important piece of what we're looking at doing. Nothing's done, it's, nothing is set in stone right now, we're just going through the process, and we're, we're notifying people that we are going through the process. So, with that said, I think we'll agree that-
We'll change the verbiage.
We'll change the verbiage on there.
Thank you.
Thank you. A couple other things on my report, we had a, we're doing the- In accordance with our affection for our police department, Chief Finland and our former sheriff, Bill Prim, were instrumental in putting together a regional training facility for the McHenry County. And we had our official groundbreaking last week. It was attended by a couple of mayors, mostly the sheriff's department, a couple of the key police chiefs. It was just a great testament to our shared services commitment that we have through the county, our municipal partnering. This is something that we will always be grateful for, that we have this opportunity to provide an indoor, safe, state-of-the-art training facility for all of our officers here in the Village of Cary, as well as the other partnering municipalities and other municipalities that choose to be part of this. So, just so, for, for further clarification, currently, our officers train outside in a gravel pit. So, this is a step up. And a lot of this facility is being paid for by the sheriff's department and the county through seized, what's the call, chief? The seized funds, the, whatever it was, the former-
Seized assets.
Seized assets.
For the training facility, and the county is funding the firearms range.
Yeah. So, we're, we're very excited. You know, again, anytime that you can get a bunch of municipalities together to drive down the costs of doing business, that's only gonna benefit our taxpayers, it's a win-win situation. So, we were thrilled to be a part of that. So, we look forward to when the actual construction starts in, in the coming days, or I should say, weeks. And then, finally, I was, through my role as the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus Chairman, I was asked to testify in front of the City and Villages Committee in Springfield. It was an absolutely fascinating experience for me. It's, we're, as you see LGDF, I wonder where they got the letters, ideas for the idea for their large letters, just saying. I, I think that it's, it's important that we continuously educate our residents, the taxpayers, what this money is. When you work for an employer and they withhold your Illinois income tax, 100% of that goes to the state of Illinois. Through an agreement 50 to 60 years ago, through a promise, they're supposed to give us 10% of that back. To the Village of Cary, that's, that's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars every year that we're missing out on. In 2011, they reduced it to five, so we lost out on that. In subsequent years, it was boosted up to six, where it stood for a long time, and we lobbied heavily with them last year, and they gave us .016% more. That's, that, it's, it's, it's almost insulting. But we went down there in force. There was 15 mayors that were asked to testify, and it was really a, a great experience. We had incredible questions asked by both sides of the aisle. They all said that they understand our plea and that they will try to work together. We'll see, we'll, we'll see how that goes. But I, I think when you have, the, the next day, this was on a Tuesday, and then the next day, the Wednesday, there was over 400 mayors down in Springfield lobbying for this, because this money will offset property taxes. Imagine if we had hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars more every year to use towards our infrastructure projects, our streets. Remind, I just wanna remind everybody, whenever we do a survey, a public survey of our entire community, the number one thing people are concerned about is our streets. They want streets. And we've got, what, Eric, we got $50 million worth of unfunded street mandate, man project, street funding projects. So, we need help along the way. So, we are gonna be doing a huge campaign, so you'll be seeing a little bit of this in, in the news, on newspaper, we're doing a, in the next week, we're gonna be doing a, a very large press conference in the city with a bunch of mayors and other elected officials, as well as the county chairs, because they are missing out on this, too. So, it's something that's very important to us, and we spend a lot of time working with our legislators to, to get this done. So, again, thank you for listening to this, and I think it's important that we continue the message with our boards and all of our residents. It's an important piece of legislature. All righty, moving forward, anything on the trustee reports? Anybody?
And I was just-
Hit it, I called it, go ahead, hit it.
I was gonna say, I was gonna do it at the end.
Yeah.
No, I just wanted to, a shout-out to Chief Finland and our village administrator, Eric, and the mayor. We hosted a, an event for the candidates for Miss Cary Grove, 21 young ladies, and we did, they did a fantastic job with a self-defense course, really preparing these young ladies as they're getting ready to go off to college on some skill sets that everyone should have. So, I just wanna extend a, a huge thank you, very appreciated, and a great job, so, thank you.
Thanks, I just wanna make sure that we recognize Deputy Chief Nadenoff as well, as he ended up with a Purple Heart for that, so.
Yeah, yes, he did.
He drew blood, yeah, blood was drawn.
Blood, blood was drawn, it is true, it is, it is true.
All's good in love and war, right? Or Miss Cary Grove in the Village of Cary. Thank you. All right, anything else? All right, moving forward, our consent agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items A through Q, as shown on the village's website and is displayed on the video monitor during the village board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
McAlpine?
Yes.
Dudik?
Yes.
Collier?
Yes.
Worrath?
Yes.
Stefani?
Yes.
Thank you, and now, moving to items for separate action, I will entertain a motion to approve an ordinance granting approval of a conditional use amendment for the cannabis dispensary with ancillary infusion and, and variances to the screening requirements along the southern property line and reduction in the rear building setback to zero feet for the property located at 20 Northwest Highway.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Director Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor, Village Board. As mentioned, the item for review this evening is regarding a conditional use amendment for the dispensary on Northwest Highway that was approved last summer, and variances related to a small modification to their plans as originally approved. Brief history for the property, the property is Zone B3R, which is our fringe business residential district. The petitioner is seeking approval of the three actions for the conditional use amendment and the two variances. The property history dates back to the original corporate limits for the village, but has had various uses and zoning classifications for it throughout its lifetime, with the most recent classification, the B3R district in 2003. As the board will recall, back in the summer of last year, the village approved a tax amendment to modify the village's regulations to allow dispensary within the B3R district as a conditional use. And for the specific property, approved a conditional use permit and variance for the cannabis dispensary. Following those approvals, the petitioner has proceeded to move forward with their project. They have applied for and obtained building permits for the buildout of the space and are working towards the conclusion of those permits. However, during the state licensing process with the, for the dispensary, they did receive some comments back for the review for obtaining the licenses from the state, which is a requirement for the conditional use permit locally here. There was a requirement to enclose a loading area that was originally designed to be paved in the rear of the building. And as part of that discussion with the state, they're proposing to perform a small building addition on the rear of the structure that would require the variances that are sinking relief this evening. This slide shows the original site plan on the left-hand portion of the image. As you can see, there was an asphalt access aisle that was originally approved or proposed in the rear of the building. With the proposed site plan, they're seeking to install or construct a addition to the rear of the building that would go up to the property line. That would be for deliveries to the building with a small vehicle that'd be able to pull into that garage, essentially addition on the rear of the building. The addition does require some additional relief, obviously, which is why they're here this evening. They're seeking a variance to reduce the building setback from the existing 10-foot setback, which is a non-conforming setback, to zero feet to accommodate the addition. Within the B3R district, the rear yard setback defaults to, is, within our code, is a zero-foot setback. However, since the property is adjacent to a single-family residentially zoned property, it does increase the required setback to match what is in the adjacent district. In this case, that would be 40 feet, so the existing 10-foot setback does not meet that requirement, and they're seeking to reduce that further to the zero foot. Additionally, with that review setback, the petitioner is also seeking to eliminate the buffer yard requirements in the rear of the building as required for dispensary within our code. Due to the zero-foot lot line as proposed, there would be no room to install landscaping in that area. However, they are still proposing to maintain the landscaping that was proposed to screen the parking lot from the adjacent residential uses, and there's an existing six-foot fence that's in that area as well that provides additional screening for the property. This slide shows the existing conditions and also the original elevations that were approved last summer. As mentioned, there was a paved area behind the building where deliveries were to be made, and they're just seeking to construct a 12-foot tall structure with a garage door that would be in that area that was originally planned to be paved. The image that's in the lower left-hand portion of the slide shows the existing conditions in that area. And you can see there's a bit of a great separation between the subject property and the residential property to the south with the six-foot fence on top of that gray differential as well. Also, in the rear of the picture, you may be able to see there's extensive landscaping that's on the adjacent property, and then the commercial property, which is adjacent to this property, also has a building setback, which is narrower than the existing setback here, as you can see the, the building in the far parts of that picture. With any zoning relief or projects that are proposed, there's various reviews from the village's comprehensive plan and downtown Cary strategic plan, in this case, would also apply for planning guidance. As originally discussed last summer, the property is designated as commercial in our comprehensive plan, and the proposed dispensary would be consistent with that designation from a retail perspective. Also, the downtown Cary strategic plan encourages more commercial uses within the downtown area, surrounding downtown area, as belief that the proposed use will further those recommendations within those plans. Also, within the unified development ordinance for any conditional use, there are various standards that need to be met, which are summarized on the slide. Specifically, the use will not diminish or impair values of property within the immediate vicinity, will not impede the normal orderly development of surrounding property, and will not contribute to an overburdening of municipal services, among others. The zoning board reviewed the matter during their hearing in April and voted, by a vote of four to one, in favor of the conditional use amendment in this case. In addition to the conditional use, there are also, the various relief as proposed, as mentioned, to eliminate the type C transition area for the proposed landscaping in the rear yard. And this slide would show the existing conditions for the adjacent properties in the landscape plan that was originally proposed would be maintained for the proposed modifications this evening. Likewise, within the UDO, there are various standards that need to be met for variances as well, again, summarized in the slide. Based on the evidence that was provided and testimony during the public hearing, the ZPA did vote on a motion of, to support the variance. However, based on the attendance that we had that evening for the, the meeting, there were only four of the five members that were present that were able to vote on the subject, so it requires a minimum of four votes to pass a motion, and the motion failed to carry with a vote of three to one to support those two variances. So, the petitioners here this evening can provide additional information regarding their petition as far as the actions they would like to seek, but just to provide a point of clarity or a point of order from a standpoint, if the village board is to support the variances, it would require a two-thirds vote of the trustees for these variances.
Thank you. Would the petitioner like to address the board?
Good evening, my name is Patrick Smith, I'm counsel for Vertical Management, and Michael Ryan, the owner of the property. With me today is David Scott, Principal of Vertical Management, and Anthony Ryan, Development Director, who they can answer technical questions should those come up. Director Simmons has done a great job of explaining kind of how we got here. At the ZPA, we spent a lot of time trying to explain the kind of the why we got here, because it's a, it's a strange situation, and I thought I would just take a couple of minutes of your time to give you the contextual answer, at least from our perspective. You might recall from last summer that Vertical Management's unique selling proposition is their craft dispensary. A substantial proportion of the products that they sell, they are making fresh in small batches. They're not buying prepackaged, shipped in from across the country products like you might see in other dispensaries. That's a real distinction that, that is new to this region, frankly. Because they're doing that, because they're sourcing materials themselves and, and bringing it to the site, to infuse onsite, to make the small batches for themselves, they're required to carry a transport license as well as their dispensary license, right? Because it's their vehicle, it's their employees doing the work. Generally thought to be not a problem. In Illinois, the principal review of all things related dispensaries is run through the Illinois Department of Financial and Professional Regulation, and almost every dispensary goes through site plan review, building plan review with the IDFPR. I'm gonna say that wrong at some point, the IDFPR, and, and we are no different. In our case, however, the Department of Agriculture has also given an opportunity to make comments on the building plan and the site plan. We did not anticipate that was going to be a problem in our due diligence, because although the two different agencies do get an opportunity to comment, they don't have separate criteria. They're working from the same state regulations, the exact same state regulations. And throughout the process, it turned out to be not an issue at all. The two agencies were entirely on board with each other until we got to kind of the very, very end, and after a change-up in staff, reviewing staff with agriculture, they came back and they said, "Well, although we're working from the same playbook, we disagree with IDFPR about one thing, and that thing is this. Your delivery door is great, we like that it's out of sight, it needs to be in an enclosed area." And we said, "That's great, we, we intend to put fencing up, it's an enclosed area." The language that you saw looks familiar to you. It's very close to what this village uses for dumpsters on commercial properties, right? And that was our interpretation, that was IDFPR's interpretation, that's really everybody's interpretation except for agriculture. They said, "No, our interpretation is enclosed area really should be enclosed on all sides, including a roof." So, we did what was reasonable at the time. We spent some time trying to reconcile the two agencies, to bring them around to the way that everyone else has viewed and the IDFPR views this. And that, that burned several months, frankly, before we, we learned that we were just kind of trying to push the boulder up the hill with them, right? Their principal position at the end of the day is, well, we agree that a fenced-in, monitored, camered, well-lit delivery area is safe, we're allowed to have a different interpretation of the language, and we think our interpretation is safer. As a practical matter, my client is, you know, a million dollars plus into this project with more to come, and, you know, would love to save the cost of building a garage on the back of this unit, absolutely. Would like, love to save the cost of having to go through this process, but on an ethical level, we, they cannot argue with the truth of the matter, which is, for employees, for the public, an enclosed garage is safer. And so, they're willing to go through this process. Now, the why of why the two agencies disagree, I can't give you that context, it, it makes no logical sense. We spent a lot of time talking to everybody to try and get our arms around it. We spent a lot of time with the ZPA talking about that issue, about why that would be the case. And there's no, really no resolution. We'll answer all of your questions, the only question we can't answer is why, and that is only because, after all of our efforts, we can't come up with the answer to why. It's simply that agency's interpretation of a couple of words in a regulation. So- So, where does that leave us? Leaves us with requesting a zero setback, a zero-yard setback in that rear of that property. It is not substantially out of keeping with many of the other properties in the B3R district that are along that stretch of the road. In fact, if you kind of walk east, you'll hit a bunch of mixed-use or residential uses, commercial spaces where garages are built right up, or substantially right up to the property lines as well. So, it doesn't substantially change the character of the area. What it does do for us is it allows us to bring a vehicle into a garage, close the garage, and then do loading from an enclosed garage into an enclosed building. A little bit of belts and suspenders, you may recall from our original site plan that in order to gain access through the loading area, that loading door in the first place, we have a ten-foot security air gap. So, you can't actually walk into the building from the exterior. You can walk into a secure room, right? And once you're in the secure room, then the manager on the inside can see you're in the secure room and buzz you through into the actual facility. So, this adds kind of like a second layer to that. But we think, you know, it will ultimately be a little safer. Because it's setback a little bit from the site corridors, unless you're looking directly there as you're heading eastbound right before the turn, the garage is probably going to be innocuous entirely there, meaning the impact, we think, is mostly to the neighbor to the south who has the adjoining property. We approached that neighbor, asked if they have an objection to it. Even before we started the process with you, there was no objection, and so we thought we would come and ask for this amendment to what was already sort of agreed was going to be a variation to the requirements in the first place. So, that's the why we got here. I'm happy to answer any of the technical questions about that process, and if there's some site-specific or use questions, Mr. Ryan and Mr. Scott certainly could answer those as well.
Anybody have any questions?
You did a nice job telling us the history and explaining everything. I don't have any questions. Thank you.
I have one for Director Simmons. The two photographs you had shown were the fence just to the south of the property. Who owns the fence that is in that picture on the left, and will that fence remain when this new structure is put in?
I believe the fence is on the adjacent property, it's not on the subject property, so it is the residence that owns that. So, it would be the adjacent residential property owns that fence currently.
Thank you.
I just have a quick comment. I agree. Great job with presenting what happened, and I guess we all can say that, you know, we don't know how all these bodies all work together, and it's sometimes a little challenging when they don't all agree on everything. I just don't, I did go back there and I walked it, and I don't see any negative impact. There's, no one was using that space no matter what, so I don't see the tree still going to be there. Everything that's in this adjacent lot is remaining. So, that's kind of how I viewed it.
Thank you.
Can you explain a little bit of the timing between, you know, your application, our approval, and you had to have some initial review with some of the state agencies, correct?
Sure. So, IDFPR has been looking at the construction drawings almost since the time they were approved and submitted here at the village for preliminary building plan. And so, there have been many, many, many circuits of comments going back and forth. Most of them were at the architect level, right? So, we would consider those to be informal comments back and forth. The first real sign that agriculture was going to look at this section of the code a little differently came towards the end of last year, and it was really in February of this year when we determined that we were kind of, you know, tilting at the windmill with them, hoping to get them on board. So, we weren't waiting, we were sitting on our haunches with this one. We really, honestly, were hoping that they would come to our way of viewing it.
Because, you know, at this point, it's, you've already invested money into the project, and while I'm not speaking for the rest of the board, if for some reason you were declined, you're between a rock and a hard place. Put in money to a business you can't open.
Well, no, this is a function of the transport, right? So, certainly if there were no transport, right, you could operate, in theory, you could operate a dispensary there, you would have to purchase only product from a large mass manufacturer who carried their own transport licenses, and so then we would not be subject to the review comments, and we could just move forward on IDFPR, IDFPRs, I hate that, approval, right? And so, we could fall back and become part of the pack, but, you know, we want to be Spirit Water, we don't want to be aisle twelve of Jewel.
You want to have a different business model.
Right, and I think that benefits all of us.
So, the question I have is, if you put up, if you would have left it before, you would have had a ten-foot buffer, ten, eleven-foot buffer. What, you can't now have any landscaping back there because you're pretty much going to go to the lot line, correct? You're going to go up to pretty much his fence with your garage. So, I'm having a hard time visualizing how a garage, a twelve-foot-high garage goes literally right up to a fence, but let's just assume that it's relatively close. Would you be willing to consider some landscaping inside the residence backyard to help kind of shield your building, particularly the garage, from the view of his backyard? Because before, I think that would have been there. Now, it doesn't seem like it will.
Yeah. You may have noticed from the photos, the tree line, which you can't get, I guess, is this, the concept of depth. Those are actually, I think, three kind of mature trees. Nothing really grows there to begin with. It's a, it's a good lighting job there, but it's a dark place. Realistically, I suppose, sure, would they, could they try and do something inside the neighbor's backyard, but the coverage there is going to be even worse than it is on our side of the fence. So, if the neighbor said, you know, "Hey, I would like some additional arborvitae to get the last few feet to the corner." Can I say, "Yeah, we would be happy to put arborvitae or anything in that they desired on their property," but I don't want to presume that I can tell them what we will put on there? But if they, if they ask for that last, it's about, I think, four or five feet from where the tree overhangs to the fence corner. Not quite where the garage is going to be, but if they felt like they wanted some additional screening, absolutely.
Yeah, I guess, from my perspective, I'm not thinking about the use today of your building, nor the resident that's in the house behind you today. Down the road, things change.
Yes.
And when that individual wants to sell his home, it needs to be as marketable as possible, and he's already going to be fighting, to some degree, the fact that there's a business right up to his backyard. So, any screening that could be put that would make his home retain, you know, more of desirability, I guess, would be something I would just comment on.
If I can jump in, that's exactly the thrust of my first question, is what was going to happen there. But I think this picture paints, or excuse me, the picture here does paint the picture for us, which is a six-foot fence, what's clearly twenty-plus-foot-high, fully mature trees. I struggle to see if I'm in that backyard that I'm even going to see your building, because it's going to be either if I'm sitting on a chair, I'm going to see the fence. If I'm standing up and walking the fence, I'm going to see the top of the trees. So, to Trustee Dudek's idea about the future, well, that was always a concern doing this, regardless of a setback. So, I think we, I think we bought that cow already, and so the reality is, this is how we're going to milk the cow. We're going to have to make a little bit more of a variation than we wanted. I'm not a fan of anything on zero lot line, ever up to the line, but in this scenario, we're backed into that position, and I don't think for that particular resident, given these circumstances, they're going to notice any difference.
Trustee Collier sort of suggested the same. He said he was back there and walked through it, so.
Yeah, I did too.
Come all the way to the edge?
They do. They're very, they're very close.
Okay. Those are my comments.
Trustee Stefani, do you have any questions?
No, I think I'm good. I was with him a couple of weeks ago.
You were at the ZPA.
Answered all my questions that I had, so.
Former ZPA member.
Yeah, former ZPA, sorry.
We've got to be careful now. There's three people from the ZPA in this board now. Oh, boy. All right, no other questions? Roll call, please.
Dudek?
Yes.
Walraff?
Yes.
Collier?
Yes.
McAlpine?
Yes.
Stefani?
Yes.
Weinhammer?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving forward, I will entertain a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Elgin, Village of Cary, Village of Lake and the Hills, City of McHenry, and the County of McHenry, establishing the McHenry County Consolidated Law Enforcement Joint Training Facilities.
I'll move.
Second.
I guess it's up to me, then. But I just want to kind of do a brief overview of the intergovernmental agreement that's been presented to you today. It's the product of a lot of meetings, of the vision of a former McHenry County Sheriff's, Bill Prim, and a number of different police agencies, municipalities, that have either been part of or elected to not be part of the effort going forward. As you can see right now, there's five agencies that are involved, Elgin, Cary, Lake and the Hills, the City of McHenry, and then McHenry County. In 2019, this board passed a resolution that indicated that we would like to see some type of joint facility, some joint training facility, that would increase in essence our effectiveness and efficiency as it related to training, the ability to present training or deliver training. So, that happened September 2019. After numerous meetings, as I indicated before, we come up with the agreement that we have now, and this agreement addresses two facilities. One of the facilities is the old village hall and police department, which is referred to it in the agreement as the 460 building, and then the fire, I'm sorry, it's the 655 building. And then the 460 building is the firearms range, it's 460 Carywood Circle. What this intergovernmental agreement does is it allows us to develop a budget and distribute costs proportionally based on the number of shooters. We did show our work that was attached to the packet, so you can see that there's a adjustment made for correctional officers at point five. So, they're counted as a half of shooter versus all the other sworn police officers that are a full shooter as it relates to the agencies that are involved. The intergovernmental agreement also establishes a board, and it's how it's composed, and its operation, and a mechanism for voting. The votes are, each member agency receives one vote, and the sheriff's office gets two. I think that's only fair. They're putting forward the lion's share of funding, allow $2 million to renovate the 655 building, and somewhere in the area of $5.5 million for the firearms range. We did come up with the original, or initial budget, and it's based on a number of different things that you can see in the packet, is the county's estimated budget and some of our costs that we incurred when we were operating the building at the 655 Village Hall Drive and the police department. And then also, there are some unknowns as it relates to the operation of firearms range, because it's not, it's not been constructed yet, so we don't know exactly how much it will cost to operate that building. However, we do know that there will be some staff assigned to that, those facilities, and there'll be an administrative assistant and a maintenance person, custodian of some sort, that they will be able to, the county will be able to recapture those costs in a proportional manner. We did conduct, as part of this endeavor, an inventory of all of our personnel within these agencies to identify those individuals that can present training. We have a number of different mandates that we have to satisfy now because of the Safety Act, and it does make sense that before you have a critical incident, that you train with people prior to that critical incident. The, again, it indicated that the building is funded by the County of McHenry, and you'll be seeing the companion land lease here, probably next meeting, that will be between the Village of Cary and the County of McHenry for a long-term lease of the property that the building's going to be built on. So, and the other part of this equation is, not only is there a training component, but there's also an emergency management component that's included in this intergovernmental agreement, and the McHenry County will use that facility either as a primary EOC or as a secondary EOC, Emergency Operating Center. So, it made a lot of sense to put this building, or these structures, in this quadrant in the county, because that's where most of the population is resident. So, our costs for the Village of Cary for the first year, for what we could identify as a preliminary cost would be 7.22% of the total operating cost, and it relates to about $23,387.39, and then there was a $5,000 initiation fee for all the agencies that were involved. So, our total expenditure for this year will be $28,387.39, well under the $50,000 that we had placed in that capital improvement plan, number one, and number two, significantly under what we were looking at originally in the hundreds of thousands of dollars from our proportion based on the fact that McHenry County came forward with the funding. So, all that said, I'd be happy to entertain any questions or commentary. I think that this is a very good project, and I really do think that down the road, it'll serve both the citizenry of McHenry County well, as well as adjacent areas by, you know, attracting sworn police officers into this community to receive training.
Any questions? I think we've all been in major support of this through the entire time, although our newly-elected trustee, Stefani, may have a comment about it, or question you may want to ask about it.
No, all my questions were answered during the zoning piece. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'm just thrilled. I just think it's great to be leaders in this, and to have, what, five different municipalities coming together for an intergovernment agreement, intergovernmental agreement? To me, it's a roadmap, you know, for what people should be doing. People working together, coming up with, you know, ideas that can help everybody benefit. So, I am very proud that we are part of this and delivering something that's going to be very helpful, as you said, to not just our residents, but the whole county, so.
And I forgot to make it, incidentally, there's no indoor range that is owned by municipality, you know, in the county. Everyone's reliant on something else, so now we'll have a structure and a training facility that is, has been purpose-built for law enforcement, and it is owned by the county and some partners.
One question. What kind of plan is there, cost, if you have other municipalities join?
There is a mechanism in the intergovernmental agreement to allow other agencies to participate. What it would really actually do is reduce our operating cost, because there would be a bigger proportion to, you know, kind of distribute that, those operational costs across. But there is that, and it would be by a vote, and there's not only a mechanism for, if there's additional municipalities or organizations that are interested in being partners, but there's also the ability for us to have customers or clients use the facility, and in that case, those funds that we would be able to capture would be used to offset our operating costs.
But again, just for the public, it's not a public. When you say other people, it's not going to be open to the public.
Only law enforcement.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a great opportunity. I have to thank Chairman Bueller, Chairman of McHenry County, who's an outstanding partner, represents the county well, the new sheriff, Rob Tattlemann. They'll be great partners to work with. And to you, Chief Finland, and former sheriff, this was an incredible idea that you came to us with five years ago and said, "This is something that we need to do," and... And it's, you know, with everything that's going on in today's world and the hits that the police departments are taking, we're investing more in our police than ever. And the county stands behind everybody strong. This also is an opportunity that does not, now there's no tax increase involved to produce this building, to have such highly-trained individuals. As we always say, it's not a question of if something happens, it's when, and we will all be trained together. So we're very excited about it. It's a great honor to host this here in the Village of Cary. It's, we're setting, we're blazing the trail, as they say. So thank you very much, chief, for everything that you've done, along with all your other partners. So thank you. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Stefani?
Yes.
Collier?
Yes.
Weinhammer?
Yes.
McAlpine?
Yes.
Walraff?
Yes.
Dudek?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Administrator's report, Minister, Administrator Muramoto.
Nothing at this time.
Nothing. Department head reports. Chief Finland?
Yes, sir. Two things. Number one, we did conduct our drug take-back event last Saturday. We collected 45 pounds of unwanted medication during that time period. But over the course of a six-month period, we collected, in addition to that, 45 pounds, 163.6 pounds of unwanted medications that were transported to the Drug Enforcement Agency collection point that'll be destroyed. So it continues to astound me how much unwanted medication that we collect. And then the second thing that I have to say is that the Cary Grove Youth Baseball Softball Parade was scheduled for last Saturday, and it was canceled due to weather. It has been rescheduled to May 7th, Sunday, same time, same route. So from, on Main Street, from Wolf to school, and then terminating at Maplewood.
Thank you, chief. Deputy Director Stein?
Yeah, nothing for tonight. Thank you.
Killing me. Director Simmons? Okay.
We, just, there is one thing, just a reminder that the south side of the railroad tracks will have their brush pickup next week, beginning Monday, May 8th. So just one reminder to the public.
Thank you, Courtney. Any future agenda items and discussion by the village board? None said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.